Hey. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the town of Dewey Beach, monthly town council meeting with a public hearing. It's being held at the Dewey Beach Light Saving Station as well via Zoom. Today is Friday, May 19th, 2023, and it's 3 o'clock. With that, I will convene the town council meeting and start the open ceremonies with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the republic for which it stands.
Thank you, everyone. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
Present remotely.
Present in person.
Commissioner Jazinski.
Present.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
And Mayor William Stevens here. So we have a quorum, as well as members of our community, and as well as the council chief and town manager. With that, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I said aye, but it was on your side.
Okay. Just for a public comment, please note that the public comments will be allowed with each agenda item, and that this placeholder is incorrect for items that are not on the agenda. Kate, is there anybody in the waiting room for a public comment? Updates, announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the beach replenishment, as you've seen, has started. The Army Corps contacted me yesterday and said they were moving the equipment down last night. Instead of going north from Reed Street up to Swede Salisbury Street, they're actually going south from Reed to Collins first. So you'll see, right now, they have Reed and Rodney Street closed off, and as they progress over the next five days south to Collins Street, they will slowly close the streets off as they go south. Once they're done there, then they'll go back up to Reed and work up towards Swede Street, closing those streets off. They will not be working Memorial Day week. That's Friday, the 26th, they will not work, Saturday, the 27th, Sunday, the 28th, and on Monday, the 29th, they will not work until 6:00 PM. At 6:00 PM, they'll start back up, and they should be done on or about the 9th of June, if not sooner. They will be putting in a snow fence sometime during this project. They did get that money committed. Met with Senator the Inland Bays. We're continuing to work on the project at Sunset Park, and at the end of Dagworthy Street on the Bayside, we'll be meeting with property owners in that area next week to discuss what we'd like to do. Now, at that end, we are going to need their cooperation and support. Hayden Road was the first of three roads that were paved, that were paved. That was done with CTF funding from Speaker Schwarzkopf. The other two roads that are going to be paved are New Orleans. It will be Monday. They moved it again. It'll be Monday, and then Bellevue Street will be sometime after Memorial Day. And again, all that CTF funding through Speaker Schwarzkopf. 27 parking spots at the end of Rodney Street on the Bayside. They are up, it will be public parking, it will be paved parking. DPNL will come in and put two lights on either side of the street for us to light that area up. 5G poles. We've got the new poles in on Clayton and on Rodney Street. We are just waiting for DPNL to hook the power up to those two poles, and then the old poles will be moved off to Dune. Been working with Nelson Warren, who has got our trash contract. You will see, he has already put some of the cans out from Swede Street down to Chesapeake. He was holding off until we see how much of the beach replenishment will affect where those cans would go. Audit. Sheen has done a good job coordinating for the audit. You saw some of the paperwork has already been sent out for the commissioners and others to sign, so we are starting the audit paperwork. I met with the postmaster today of the area. I'm trying to figure out what the rules in the town of Dewey Beach. I'll put out some further guidance in the newsletter in June. We get a lot of complaints about cars parking in front of mailboxes. I wanted to know from the postmaster where we could move the mailboxes, what are the requirements, where do they need to be on the roads? It was a very good meeting. You'll see the sign up here. These are the new signs that the chief and I decided that we should start using. The folks at Wings to Go Plaza, Sun Spots Plaza, they have approved us putting these signs up there. There are two very large signs, where they used to have large signs about no lauding and no parking. We've got this there, and we also have five other smaller signs in that parking lot. We're trying to be proactive and address the folks that are lauding in that parking lot, whether it's during June bug week, or whether it's just folks there late at night. And we are getting the cooperation from the HOA that actually has those properties.
Did you say that is the only parking lot, or there are other parking lots?
That's the only one right now. If there's other ones around town, we do have some more signs that we can put up. We'll see how that works out. We just got those signs up this afternoon. And with that, unless the mayor has anything else or any questions for me, the commissioners, I'll turn it over to the chief and the mayor for the swearing in.
Great.
Mayor, I'm going to do a quick bio on him. Just take a minute. All right. PFC Matthew Planner recently moved to Lewis, Delaware, from the Reading, Redding, PA area with his wife, stepson, and stepdaughter in October of 2022, receiving his certification from Delaware State Police on March 1st, 2023. He has 30-plus years of police experience in Pennsylvania. He was a sergeant for 15 years of his career. He's also an instructor in a wide variety of topics. Matt is the owner of the Police Innovations LLC and holds two U.S. patents on prisoner restraint systems, which focuses on prisoner and officer safety, and we're very happy to have him here.
Welcome.
Raise your hand.
Yes, sir.
You're right. We pay attention. I am Matthew Planner.
I am Matthew Planner.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will uphold, support, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Delaware.
And the Constitution of the state of Delaware.
That I will fairly and equally enforce.
That I will fairly and equally enforce.
The laws and ordinances of the state.
The laws and ordinances of the state of Delaware.
Of Delaware.
And the town of Dewey Beach. And the town of Dewey Beach.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of the office of the town of Dewey Beach police officer.
Of the office of the town of Dewey Beach police officer.
Police officer.
And the town of Dewey Beach police officer.
According to the best of my ability and within the ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Just good luck.
All right, I'll see you this afternoon.
See you out.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. Have a good weekend. You, too. Any announcement, any other announcements? Okay. I did want to convey that, you know, in the last meeting, we had put out prayers for our first mayor, and unfortunately, Bruce Bablo did pass away on May 3rd. So just keep his family in the prayers, please. Committee reports will go by person. Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, I have only one committee update. That's the Climate Change Committee. They met, I think it was two weeks ago, to review the strategies and possible actions that they might recommend to the town council with respect to climate change. Some of them are, you know, things like just increasing the flea board, yes, the free board, and public education, that was something, too. Part of what they were doing was trying to sort out what would require, what could be a direct recommendation to the town council versus something that has to go through planning and zoning. I think they also are beginning to explore some of the other kind of educational for themselves things that they would need to do, so that they could understand what the impact of some of the recommendations or actions might be. So there might be some time spent understanding the provisions of Section 1 of one of the Town Code, which is all of the flood zone regulations. So they will be meeting, I believe, again in July. That's their next planned meeting.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Investment Committee has not met.
Commissioner Jazinski.
No updates.
And Commissioner Bauer.
Budget and Finance, I know, has an upcoming meeting. I think it's noticed. Going to take a look, you know, get an advanced start on next year and some revenue things that we may have to bring a referendum to. So that's being discussed, and further news on that after they meet. And then the Marketing Committee, we're going to talk about here in a minute, so I don't want to waste anybody's time at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner. That concludes committee reports. Approval of minutes. Can I get a motion for approval of the April 21, 2023 town council meeting minutes?
So moved.
In a second.
There should be an adjustment to item number 20. Some of that got a little bit garbled, because I listened to the recording, and it wasn't entirely clear, and I think it was your fault.
That's fine.
Let's see, the fourth, or third, a fourth red line, I guess, where it says, "Infrastructure, Conferency Plan, and the Legal and Litigation Funds," comma, then I suggest we change this to, "Apply, to the extent possible, public safety funds towards the new town hall and police station project, and then move the assignment of any hotel lodging tax in the town hall going forward, and move," and then another change, "Funds in excess of the required unassigned balance of $680,000 to the town hall fund." That's a little clearer, and I think that's really what we intended.
Okay. Any other?
I can repeat that.
I think that is all.
Can you get off the?
Okay, all right, okay.
Then can I get a, with a motion with revised minutes? In a second.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that also passes unanimously. With that, we'll open a public hearing. This is a public hearing on ordinance to amend Chapter 185-30 of the Municipal Code to allow signage consistent with current standards and practice. Can we do all three?
You can do the public hearing on all three.
Okay, so a public hearing on all three. Public hearing on ordinance to amend Chapter 185, Zoning Table 2 of the Municipal Code relating to maximum floor area and maximum number of bedrooms, and Chapter 185-60 concerning extension of non-conforming properties. The third element for open public hearing is public hearing on the ordinance to amend Chapter 185-80 of the Municipal Code relating to provisions regarding renewal building permits. With that, we are open for public hearing. Anyone here? Is there anyone in the room? Okay. So we will close public hearing.
Well, you may want to, I mean, you don't have to do it as part of the public hearing, but you may want to hear from...
Yeah, I was going to, since I was going to do it as part of the agenda items.
That's fine.
Okay, all right. Agenda item one, and is Ms. Hinks online? Okay. One is, "Discuss a possibly vote on the ordinance to amend Chapter 185-30 of the Municipal Code to allow signage consistent with current standards and practice." Ms. Hinks?
Yes, sir.
Want to give us a little overview?
It appears, it appears that there's varying kinds of sign, that signs, especially the digital signs that have been installed over the years. And so I think that is the criteria for reason why I brought this up, because many of the businesses would want to put in digital signs currently. However, the code prior stated it could only be changed one or two or three times a day, whereas many of the signs that are digital, that have been installed in years past, frequently change messages and lighting and design and so forth, many times, three and four times before you get past the light, if you're stopped by a traffic light. So with that, in order to obtain consistency for all folks, I ask for a clarification on what to do about digital signs.
All right, so this is, in reading the ordinance specifically, oh, there's an addition to 185-30a of, "To surrounding properties, including signs that provide moving spotlight that might distract pedestrians or motorists, revolving lights, animation, or blinking or moving lights."
That was actually moved from later, yeah, just to consolidate things that were about causing the traffic hazard or nuisance.
Am I wrong in thinking that there are signs like this in, I mean, there are blinking signs that are in there?
Yeah, I'm sure there are probably signs that don't follow the code, the current code.
Current code, okay.
And there are signs that have animation and moving lights, but I don't know of any that make noise, smoke, or odor, so we're good there.
This is a simplification that came out of planning and zoning.
If I could, Mayor. I think the main thing was, as explained by Ms. Hinks, that the prohibition against an animated sign changing its image more than four times a day is not a workable prohibition. So actually, on the one hand, we're consolidating the two provisions, but the proposal is to drop the limitation that the image not change more than four times per day, because that's just not consistent with what we have.
What we have.
What we have, and what provokes a curtail in other municipalities as well.
Right, okay.
So it's mostly about getting that language out of the code.
Got it. I don't have any other conversation?
I have no objections to this.
I have no objections either. So can I have a motion?
Motion. I guess.
Any other discussions?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number two, "Discuss a possible vote in ordinance to amend Chapter 185, Zoning Table 2 of the Municipal Code relating to maximum floor area and maximum number of bedrooms, and Chapter 185-60 concerning extension of non-conforming properties."
Mayor, there is a typo.
There is?
Yes. I'm trying to figure out, ever since I found it, how to tell people it. So in the table, under NR, the sentence that begins on the left side, "Any deck area under a house raised on pilings or porch on," having the "on" after the porch, just needs to be omitted.
Okay.
Can you find what I'm talking about?
Yes, I see it. It's at the middle of that paragraph.
Second. All right, then can I get a motion with that revision?
I move that it be accepted with that revision.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Number three, "Discuss a possible vote in ordinance to amend Chapter 185-80 of the Municipal Code relating to a provision regarding renewal of building permits." Any conversation on this? I think it was just a removal of some word of fines.
One point.
Go ahead, sir.
What it does is basically remove the ability for people to continually renew a building permit on the anniversary date of the building permit. It refers back to Chapter 71, I think it's 71-3, which says that it can only be done once. Basically get, you know, as much as two years, but that's it. There will also be another change, I think, that Planning and Zoning has already reviewed, but we'll consider that next month, which has to do with construction cost, I believe, if you renew your building permit. Let me back up, but there will be another change to that, but it will be a change to 71-3. We just don't have an ordinance for that yet.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance as drafted?
I move that we accept ordinance to amend Chapter 185-80.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
May I ask, Mayor? So we approved 185-30, and we approved 185-80, those two ordinances. We agreed that there was a typographical error on item number two, but that motion was intended to...
To approve as amended.
The motion included the adjustment, yes.
All right.
Because it was just a word.
The next item on our agenda, number four, "Discuss a possible vote to approve an official town tagline." I'll ask Commissioner Bauer to give us a brief overview, and...
I'll be...
Did you, I've used the word brief, yes.
Yes, that's why I was going to emphasize the brief.
Brief overview. Go ahead, Commissioner Bauer.
All right. In our last meeting, we referred this back to the Marketing Committee to review and, you know, take a look at some of the most frequently used words of all 1,650 submissions. So they did, and they came up with some more. So we have our, what we have in front of us here today is what they submitted on April 4th, which were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 of them. And then they came up with 14 new ones, and of those 14, the ones that are in red were the bottom seven of those 14, and then the top two and the additional top five. Now, the choice for us, I mean, we can look at it, and, you know, one of the most frequently asked questions I've gotten is, can we still use a way of life? And we can. I mean, there's, you know, we don't own it, so it's never going to go away. I mean, we can't get rid of something we don't have, right? So, you know, that is, you know, there's a nostalgia factor to that, and that's been something that people have been used to, but it's never been in a, you know, quote-unquote "official" tagline, because we have no ownership of it. And purpose of having a tagline, and I'm going to defer to Kate on this, because Kate did some fantastic research, I want to give her credit for. And Kate, would you mind going through that infographics that you have? Now, Kate, can you come up to the microphone on this?
Try this one. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you now.
Okay. So I'll just read through it. So, "Purpose of a town tagline is to succinctly and powerfully communicate to your audience the identity of the town. So a tagline or slogan paired with the name of the municipality can be branded into a logo for all future marketing materials, including newsletters, social media posts, event flyers, et cetera. For a resort or tourist destination, the goal is to attract new visitors via marketing strategies. The tagline is a concise, compelling way to grab the attention of the intended audience. It should make the public want to learn more about Dewey Beach." And on the left-hand side, I've kind of just put some examples of especially more of like a tourist destination town, so you can just kind of see how these surf city kind of encompasses Huntington Beach, California, the city that never sleeps, I think speaks well to New York, New York, et cetera, et cetera.
So, I mean, that's just, I think that's a great way for us to take a look at this, since we've really never had a tagline before. So, you know, when I look at these, we're allowed to pick any of the 16, we can pick anything we want. We can come up with something that we personally like. We can pick from one of the 1,650 submissions. We can look at the previous nine or the current 14. So we got 23 taglines in front of us. So, you know, what I'd like to do to try to narrow this down a little bit is hopefully everybody's had a chance to digest over the past month or so to, you know, what sort of fits, you know, what encompasses what Dewey Beach is today, you know, where we see Dewey Beach. I mean, there's, obviously, there's a lot of things that people like. So, you know, I'd like to, you know, we may come up, and we may end this meeting saying, hey, a way of life, we're going to move forward with that, and although we'll never own the tagline, we can still use it, because we have signage with it and stuff as well. So, you know...
Commissioner Bauer, correct me if I'm wrong. We were presented with a non-exclusive licensing to a way of life, provided that it could not, not that we're looking to make any money on anything, but we could keep using it without violating their trademark if we signed that agreement. Is that correct?
My understanding was we didn't have to order everything through them?
If we wanted to actually sell things through...
If we wanted to include things in the welcome bag.
But the risk that we're, the risk that we have right now is that we don't have rights to Dewey Beach Way of Life. And for the record, if you go to the U.S. Patent Trademark Office and type in a way of life, there are like 30 of them. There's a whole, there's multiple people that have a way of life. The local family only owns Dewey Beach a way of life. I also, so I think it's, I think as a town, we should probably exercise that agreement to make sure that we're not violating that, violating the trademark rights currently, which I think we're looking at council to make sure that he agrees.
So like with the signs as you enter towns? Got it, yes.
But I do agree with Commissioner Bauer, whether there's, that, you know, if to the extent that we could, look at what has, what the Marketing Committee has done and presented, and maybe just have a brief conversation around council if there's, if there's the intent to move forward and to add a tagline or a few taglines, it's not a limitation. We can, and we can therefore, I've also done the research on what you see, and none of these are currently trademarked that I could find. So we would have the ability to adopt 1, 2, 3, all 17, and just see what floats, doesn't matter. So I'll open up for conversation to council.
So, go ahead.
Just for the record, I don't have any objection to the council entering into that licensing agreement. It's not exclusive. It doesn't mean you can't stop using that as a tagline and use something else. It just means you can't manufacture items with that tagline or sell items that are tagged.
Well, but technically, right now, we are violating the trademark by...
So signing the agreement, I think, would cure that future issue if it ever came to us.
Not that the Wilsons would ever do that, but they could come up right now and say, you are no longer allowed to use Dewey Beach Way of Life. So I think it's in our best interest to at least cross that office to make sure that we're not violation, and they're great people, so it's not like they consider that. But I do think, I think it's something we should do, but that's, I don't know if we need to vote on that, or are you saying?
Is it, it's not on today's agenda?
Well, to discuss a possible vote to approve an official town tagline.
It's one of the submissions. It was one of the ones in the first nine, and it's also part of the top seven.
So I think that if we approve that as part of the multiple taglines that are succinctly represent what our town is, then at least with that one, I think there's an action of agreeing that we're going to trademark the ones that are not already trademarked and sign an agreement, a non-exclusive agreement, if the way of life happens.
That's correct.
Yes. So Commissioner Bauer, why don't you tell me what you like?
All right. Well, if I, you know, take into consideration the research that Kate did, and, you know, the purpose of it, you know, marketing campaigns in the future, you know, I agree that we should probably own the tagline that we're going to market, right? I mean, I think that makes the, you know, if you ask anybody in marketing, you're like, let's not use something that's trademarked by someone else, use something that's trademarked by yourself. But future marketing efforts, and, you know, we're looking at, we're going to raise some money for a new town hall, so we're, you know, that's going to be a marketing project. You know, if I look at how the town makes money, I mean, we have a, we make money when someone rents a hotel room, when they pay to park, they do a short-term rental, you know, those are your primary, you know, they buy a house, the transfer, you know, the transfer tax part of it, building permits. So, you know, like some of these, we should probably consider, you know, can we do a better job of it? I think we're pretty full, you know, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, but, you know, is there, you know, can we help our people that rent their... And they're great people, so it's not like they consider that. But I do think, I think it's something we should do. But that's, I don't know if we need to vote on that, or are you saying? Is it, it's not on today's agenda? Well, to discuss a possible vote on an official town tagline.
It's one of the submissions. It was one of the ones in the first nine, and it's also part of the top seven.
But I think that if we approve that as part of the multiple taglines that are succinctly represent what our, our talent is, then at least with that one, I think there's an action of agreeing that we're going to trademark ones that are not already trademarked and sign an agreement, a non-exclusive agreement, if the way of life happens.
That's correct.
Yes. So Commissioner Bauer, why don't you tell me what you like?
All right, well, if I, you know, taking into consideration the research that Kate did and, you know, the purpose of it, you know, marketing campaigns in the future, you know, I, I agree that we should probably own the tagline that we're going to market, right? I mean, I, I think that makes the, you know, if you ask anybody in marketing, you're like, let's not use something that's trademarked by someone else. Use something that's trademarked by yourself. But future marketing efforts and, you know, we're looking at, we're going to raise some money for a new town hall. So we're, you know, that's, that's going to be a marketing project. You know, if I look at how the town makes money, I mean, we, we have a, we make money when someone rents a hotel room, when they, they pay to park, they do a short-term rental. You know, those are your, our primary, you know, they buy a house, the transfer, you know, the transfer tax part of it, building permits. So, you know, like some of these, we should probably consider, you know, can we do a better job of it? I think we're pretty full, you know, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. But, you know, is there, you know, can we help our people that rent their homes and, you know, rent hotel rooms? Could we help them in some way drive revenue? Because if, if they make money, we make money, and I think that's where everybody wins in the, in the whole deal. So, you know, if I were to look at these taglines and in the back of my mind thinking, all right, I'm trying to drive hotel revenue, parking revenue, short-term rental revenue, and, what was the fourth one there? Forget that. Anyhow, you know, those things, which my favorites. If my top one would be, it's in that second group of five, it says Delaware's Playground. I would like to add the word favorite playground. And I wouldn't be opposed to changing the word playground to something else. But I'm looking, I look at that and I say, well, it, it advertises Delaware. It differentiates us from Rehoboth and from Bethany and Fenwick and Lewis. You know, this is, we're the favorite place of anybody that's coming to Delaware, we're the favorite. My second choice would be, it was from the previous meeting, Where Fun Meets Sun. That used the two words that were most submitted by the sixteen hundred and fifty people. That's my second. And I like the mile that lasts forever. And that was in the top two, that was one of the top two recommendations from the marketing base. So those would be my top three. And I think if everybody else has three, maybe, you know, let's see if we have any commonality with those three with anybody else.
Commissioner Jazinski, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I like, I like Paul's three suggestions there. You know, there are, there are a lot of nice slogans here. I'm not particularly wedded or objectionable to any of these, assuming we're going to pick one. Delaware's Favorite Playground, I like it.
Commissioner Persinger.
My personal preference is to try to stay with a way of life. I mean, I, this, this point was made at the marketing committee meeting that a way of life is really, means lots of different things to anybody. You can't really disagree with it. You might like the way of life here, you might not like the way of life here. But I, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's your own interpretation. It's really not committal. As soon as you start putting adjectives in there like favorite or best or most or something like that, or simple, easy, whatever. Or there's one here, Paradise, Paradise Mile, which I mentioned because my wife said I had to. Here on my list. But, you know, somebody comes to town and, and says, well, Paradise Mile, it's not my idea of paradise. But, you know, it's again, it's something you can disagree with.
They can keep going to Bethany.
Well, they can.
Well, depending which direction.
I, you know, if, if, if I had, if I were king, which I will never be, I would just continue to find a way to use a way of life, use it for free, use it in marketing campaigns. You know, if there are any unintended consequences that somebody knows about, I think, you know, there should be a way of avoiding those. I don't see a lot of, I, I don't think the town needs to be involved in selling merchandise. I, I think if you want to give something away, you can do just as well giving away somebody, giving away to someone a coffee mug or a sweatshirt or a T-shirt that just says Dewey Beach. I think that's just fine. I honestly can't remember seeing a sweatshirt that says Rehoboth Beach, the nation's summer capital. Maybe there are some, or Bethany Beach, the quiet resort. Yeah, I, I just haven't seen that, I haven't experienced that. That said, way of, a way of life, I'd like to stay with that. My, my second favorite, I think, would be a mile of sun, fun, and music. It gets more than one of the key words, I think, that were found in the, in the research that was done. And it also, it's the only one that pulls in music, which I think is a big part of the nightlife here in Dewey Beach. Then my third choice is Paradise Mile, again, because my, my arm was twisted. And so, I mean, it's not, it's not bad. I, it's, you know, it's a good short phrase that you could, you could use. So anyway, that, those would be my top three.
Great. Commissioner Gibbings.
So I am pleased that we don't have to make a decision of one. It's not that I can't make up my mind, but we all have to make up minds together. So a way of life, I like, I like that we can keep that. However, I'd like us to have one that is ours. Because I, there's something that bothers me, despite the Wilsons being wonderful people, that they're the only people we could buy anything from that had that on it. So we could never look at under other vendors. We are subject to whatever prices they want to give us. I assume they'd be kind to the town, but that kind of puts us with a single, I don't like a single anything. So I like the ones that referenced mile, but it, I don't know that everybody that comes here realizes we're only a mile long. I think it's cool, and I like to reference it, but I don't think everybody else gets it. Delaware's Favorite Playground, I like that one. But I prefer more, Fun Since Eighty-One. I love that that is referencing when we were made, when we were founded, and it's got the fun. And then I don't think this one is in here, and I don't mean to cause trouble, but where the fun never stops. Because that takes care of people being on the beach, people being out in the clubs at night. But I'm not sure that that's there, and that might have been something that my little marketing group discussion came up with.
I like that. I mean, we're allowed to come up with anything we want. I like that as well, Elizabeth. So that would be your fourth choice, or would you?
A way of life is a given, I'm glad that's not a choice. And then I would do Fun Since Eighty-One, Where the Fun Never Stops, and Delaware's Favorite Playground if I have to rank.
So.
All right. Three. I can vote?
Got it.
Hi, Commissioner Bauer. You know, I, I went through, I went through, so first things, I, I agree that, you know, part of what we'll be possibly voting on is, you know, will be a combination. And I, and I agree that we should add a way of life as, as keeping as that as the possibility or an opportunity to use it. I was, I was leaning towards Delaware's Playground before Kate put up the Atlantic City one because I don't know I want to be associated with New Jersey anymore. But I, I do like Delaware's Playground or Delaware's Favorite Playground. And I also liked Gary's Mile of Fun, Sun, and Music because I think that's the one. The, the only problem, well, because I think it's Fun, Sun, and Music, that's the only one it does. And we are very unique in terms of the music town that we have. The only argument I throw, I don't necessarily like using the mile because I don't think technically we are a mile. I think we're three quarters of a mile. And also that it is also known as the Forgotten Mile, so I feel like we'd be taking something away from them in terms of an organization. But with that being said, I think that we could, we could agree to adding those, what we put together, and we could trademark them. It's not that difficult to trademark, and we can use them as we see fit. Or we could really extend out this process and put it out to the community and have them vote. But I don't know.
Have a referendum in the fall, I guess.
No, no, you don't think that's a good idea? Okay.
So what, what then is our?
I would like to try to wrap it up, you know, so someone gets a parking pass before the season starts. If we can, if we can agree on one, two, and three today, that would be fantastic. If not, we can, we can dig deeper.
You, you were ranking and Paul was ranking, which, what do we, what?
I think Delaware's Playground, I'm sorry? Go ahead, Kate.
So number one, Delaware's Playground.
Right.
Delaware's Favorite Playground.
Favorites.
We could, we actually could put in any word that we want there, you know, but go ahead.
Outside of a way of life, second would be.
But there's.
It's not a submission.
Right.
That came up from marketing.
Wait, what was that, Kate? I couldn't hear it.
A Mile of Fun, Sun, and Music.
I can't hear.
The other, Paul, what Kate is saying is that the other ones were one-offs. So I, I think what I'm hearing is if I have agreement from council is that we're going to, I'd like to get a motion, if this makes sense, for, for, to, a motion for us to move forward on the not-exclusive rights to a way of life through the Way of Life LLC. In addition, for the, for us to trademark Delaware's Playground slash favorite Playground, and being that trademarks are, and that would also therefore be the winner of the, of the, of the contest, provided that it's not a commissioner. And in addition, we'll also trademark the other ones that were named. The, the Mile That Lasts Forever, Fun and Sun Since Eighty-One, A Mile of Fun, Sun, and Music, Paradise Mile for Gary, and Where Fun Meets Sun. So we'll trademark those in addition.
So moved.
Would all be.
We got a commissioner online.
We go back. All right, who's second to that?
I just said so moved, so we could discuss it and then vote on it, that's all.
I was second, so we can.
Yeah, second.
Okay.
It's just a question. I'm assuming we would be trademarking these with the, combined with Dewey Beach. So it would be Dewey Beach, Delaware's Favorite Playground.
Yes. Correct. Any other discussion? Okay.
All right, just to, just so we're clear with the public then, so if, if this gets approved, Delaware's Favorite Play, I think the submission was Delaware's Playground, which was the number two eighty-five on the list, Kate, if I'm correct. That would be, that would be the winner of the parking pass. The other ones that we're trademarking would get something else from us. So that's up to Bill Zolper, what, I guess we can reach out to them to see what we can give them.
Yeah, that's the next item we're going to vote on.
Okay.
Right. So second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wonderful.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, marketing committee, thank you for all your.
Yeah, marketing committee, great job. Next is discuss a possible vote on the winning submission for the town, town tagline contest. That being said, we've just gone through this. The question is that we've identified two eighty-five as the winning submission, but we also are going to be looking to trademark one, two, trademarking Mile That Lasts Forever, Fun Since Eighty-One, A Mile of Fun, Sun, and Music, Delaware's Playground, and Where Fun Meets Sun and Paradise Mile. So there's six, there's one that definitely gets the parking pass. And then we have those other five submissions. Sorry.
I agree.
For additional, there are actual submissions that someone voted.
Can you read those into the record just so that we're on the same page?
Okay. So Delaware's Favorite Playground was submission two eighty-five.
Right.
Also getting a vote, The Mile That Lasts Forever, Fun Since Eighty-One, Paradise Mile, and Where Fun Meets Sun. Were all submitted by the public.
What about the Mile?
Mile of Fun, Sun, and Music.
That was, that was from marketing.
So those other four submissions, council, any ideas as to, so do we do, just, we're going to do the parking pass and just use parking pass for Delaware's Favorite Playground or Delaware's Playground as our new tagline? Is there anything we want to do for the other four?
A step back from a parking pass.
A weekly parking pass.
Why not?
Well.
You know I love my coin.
I know. Any other? Well, I think what, one, the, the agenda item is thus discussed possibly vote on the winning submission on town tagline contest. I think we lock that into the Delaware's Playground as the new tagline or just tagline. And we'll determine a gift for the other four that's equitable. I don't think we need to do that, council is fine. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve submission two eighty-five Delaware's Playground as the winning, winner of our tagline contest?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Any conversation? Not hearing any? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, number six, discuss a possible vote to appoint Rick Hardy to the Board of Adjustments for a term of three years. Assume everyone has, I looked at Mr. Hardy's resume, it was posted. I appreciate anyone and everyone that comes forth and helps volunteer in this town. So unless there's any questions, do I have a motion?
I move that we accept Mr. Hardy as a member of, which committee are you doing this again?
Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item, number seven, I'm going to ask town manager to speak with us, speak on this briefly, but this is discuss possibly vote on the resolution to recognize National Beach, National Beach Safety Week in Dewey Beach. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Kate's been working on this, but the idea is to recognize this National Safety Week and make sure we put something out in the media, that we put something out in our newsletter, and we try to push this out as far, far forward. Captain Richmond does a pretty good job making sure our beaches stay safe. Recently, in our Outlast Newsletter, Kate added in the, the part about digging into the dunes and how that's a safety hazard. But what we want to do here is promote not only water safety, but also on the beach, digging holes, digging to the side of the dunes, just a complete piece with the beach and with the water. Kate, did I miss anything?
I don't think so. I did just a brief overview, if you want me to read it into the record. So each year, summer begins, the United States Life Saving Association sponsors National Beach Safety Week in an effort to remind beachgoers to use caution in the aquatic environment. National Beach Safety Week begins the Monday before Memorial Day and ends seven days later on Memorial Day, Monday. Dewey Beach Town staff requests that the commissioners consider recognizing the week leading up to Memorial Day as National Beach Safety Week here in Dewey. This would serve as a reminder each year to conduct social media and marketing campaigns to educate our residents and visitors on a variety of beach safety issues. The USLA is the major resource for our beach patrol for training and program guidance. The USLA also offers small grants to eligible agencies who show an ongoing commitment to beach safety. Recognizing, recognizing National Beach Safety Week serves as a benefit to our beach patrol as well as the public.
Thank you, Kate. For, for those of us who have yet to learn how to swim, I think it's a, it's probably a good thing for us to, to be aware of our surroundings. Can I have a motion to?
I move that we make a, we accept the resolution to recognize National Beach Safety Week in Dewey Beach.
And the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Also unanimous. This next item, discuss a possible vote on allocation funds required for future capital expenditures and identify possible source of funding for the, to support those acquisitions. Sheena, our finance manager, had put together a, an overview that's submitted online, you can take a look at it. We did have, as Christian Persinger had alluded to, number twenty of the minutes from the prior meeting, we had a discussion in terms of some reallocation of funds. I think, I don't know that, I don't know that we need to vote on anything here, but I think we've talked together. But my issue was I just wanted to make sure that as we try to put more funds into the town hall project, that other areas of operation were not going to be hurt in terms of capital acquisitions, whether it be for the police department or for the lifeguards, et cetera. I think, yeah, Commissioner Persinger did note that, you know, there are, there are other, there's other sources of funds that come in, whether that be grants that could, that are being used, Sally Grants or Eddie Grants that are for those things. But when I looked at it, at least the overview, I feel like our fund balance right now seemed to be sufficient for twenty-four and twenty-five in terms of that, but I'll open up for discussion.
Yeah, I think that's the problem, just looking two years out is a real problem. If you, if you look at the, you know, I, I have some questions about the figures. You know, we've got two pages of this capital expenditure budget document here, and it's a little hard to track the second page back to the first. But, but that said, if you accept that second page as kind of the truth, by the end of, you know, a couple of years, actually by the end, sometime by twenty-six, you're really out of, out of capital expenditure funds, and you have no source of revenue to go back to. We're going to be digging and scratching as much as we can to be able. to capital improvement budget. We're now devoting that to the building of the town hall. So it just isn't clear to me how we're going to be able to buy anything else once we get two or three years out here.
My only, my, I guess I have two separate thoughts on that, as we open this up for a discussion for the rest of the council. One is that I anticipate and slash hope that the building of town hall will be done by the end of 2025, so any redirection of funds after 2025 will then go towards other capital improvements from, for example, the hotel tax. Secondarily, there's a bill right now in House that is looking to potentially put a state fund, state tax on accommodations, therefore the residential accommodations. And one of the things I'm going to be asking for in the next meeting is to have a conversation about what are the next steps potentially, either through referendum, increase our 3% to get this significant funding that we need to, in order to supply the town with funds to go forward. Because I think every Dewey Beach resident, if knew, especially those that are renting, if they knew that they had to pay to collect and remit an 8% tax, that they would rather see it here in our town versus at the state level. So those are two possible sources or additional sources, but you've got that.
Well, it's just what you said. I mean, if the state imposes a tax, you're going to be paying, Dewey Beach, they're going to be paying the state as well.
The first draft of that resolution, if I remember the bill correctly, was that it would be up to 11%, so the state could not take, this, the combined state, municipal and municipality would not be greater than 11, so that if we were at 6, then they would have 5.
Right. So, but still, we're increasing the burden on them with their own tax. I mean, it's, I, I think that still has to be worked out. I think one of the assumptions you just made when you started out talking was that we would have the town hall finished by the end of '25. That doesn't mean we will have paid for it. I still don't see a funding plan for, for getting this done. There are a lot of expenditures that haven't been considered. We've got some new plans here, but we don't have any cost estimates. And what we talked about before was taking at least a million dollars out of a cost estimate. And it's also making some assumptions about whether or not we're going to do the EMT section of that and get some, some funding from the state or county for that. So I, I just don't feel like we've got a good financial plan over the next five years to pay for a new town hall and to make all the capital expenditures we're going to need to make over the next five years. You know, maybe we can do something with the accommodations tax. I'm not sure how that will be received. That's a long process, you know, to build a town hall, to accept a cost estimate for a new town hall that depends in some way on raising the accommodations tax, doesn't feel like a good bet to me. I'm not sure we want to go that direction.
Well, I, I do believe that we, when we started this conversation a year ago, we, we were at that time not necessarily knowledgeable or necessarily banking on the funds that have have been received from the state level of 3 million. At that time, we were talking about the potential of a $5 million new town hall, and now we're looking at, if you, if the EMT is part of a new town hall, the Sussex County will be paying for that, that addition. So that's not necessarily part of our new town hall. And at that point in time, Gary, we talked about whether that be debt service, debt through traditional bank debt from possibly even borrowing from our own internal funds, provided that we were able to do that and changing the charter, I think, to allow that to happen. So I think there was always an assumption, at least in my perspective, that there, that there may be some debt function. Because I, for a financial picture, you, I've always tried to look, you know, how do you match your current assets with current liabilities, long-term assets, long-term liabilities, and this is a long-term asset. And so that if we did get a 20 or 30-year note for a few million dollars, it's not going to, it's not going to break us in terms of the requirement that's right here.
Debt, debt service is not free. You have to have funds to service the debt, so, you know, I don't see that in the plan. I think we need a financial plan over the next five years that shows us how we can finance a new town hall that is an acceptable cost to all of us and continue to make the capital expenditures that are necessary. We don't have that yet. You know, we're talking about, I don't know when we're going to be asked to actually make a commitment to the final plans of the town hall. But, you know, again, what's really important about that is how we're going to pay for it.
How do you suggest we move to the, what are the next steps? Commit, council, any, Paul, Elizabeth?
It looked like David wanted to.
David, why don't you jump in here?
Well, I, you said we're not going to vote, so I, I think this was just maybe for informational purposes, but I, I agree with what Gary's pointing out, and basically between what's on the table right now for a town hall and the other capital needs we're going to have, we're basically going to kind of spend ourselves down to nothing with the grant money that we have to date. And I don't know that that is really necessarily a prudent approach in terms of, in terms of us being responsible. So to his point, I think that we need a plan with, that outlines basically how we're going to, how we're going to finance this, which capital accounts we're going to drain, which, what, you know, where's the grant money coming from, and really outline what our, what our capital accounts are going to look like. From my perspective, I, I think we're, I think we're going to be a little bit short unless we end up borrowing money. And we, to date, we haven't really talked about borrowing money.
Mr. Givens?
So my understanding, and my, my math and memory may be hazy, but my understanding is that we have at least 50% of what we need to build in hand already with money from the, because where's that?
We currently have a little over 5.1 million in hand.
Point one, and that the only way the EMS will be there is if they come up with their own million to pay theirs.
That's 6.1.
So that's 6.1. I have not heard estimates for this being built that was greater than six to seven. In fact, I heard some that were down at five, but I imagine time has passed. So I don't want us to be so, I can't believe this is coming out of my mouth, I don't want us to be so cautious in planning for the future that we make what we're planning for insufficient for our needs. I'm not going to say I'm going to trust that the rainbows and unicorns are going to bring us the money, but I believe that we have the capacity, ongoing capacity, to get grants to help us out, to continue to find funding sources, and I don't want us to think that this is all the money we'll ever have right now.
Commissioner Bauer, do you have any, any input?
I do. You know, when you build a building, it's like anything else, you know, you, you buy that house and, you know, it's always going to be bigger than you want it to be because you don't want, you don't want to be facing that decision, you know, anytime in the near future. Hopefully, you, you pay for it once and you stay there a long, long time. You know, my, my biggest fear is that, you know, five, 10, 20, 30, 40 years from now, we find out that, man, wish we, you know, we still need another X number square feet. And, you know, if we're, if we make that decision today, we're impacting a decision that's for tomorrow. I don't like the debt aspect of it, but if I had to choose between taking on some debt and then sacrificing something that we may or may not need later, I'm hoping that there's a way that maybe it could be built that you could add on to the thing afterwards. You know, can we, can we come up with, okay, here's, here's our budget, this is where we're at, and that's, you know, if, if we come into some grant money, and I think we, you know, I'm optimistic that we are, then this is a mute point, we can build, you know, exactly what we need plus. But if I had to take the choice on here, I mean, this is a building that you're going to, we're going to use for 50 years, so if we're only taking on, you know, a small amount of debt, as long as we're able to pay for it today and, and get use out of it for a long time, I think it's a good use of money.
Well, I, I, good. Commissioner Persinger?
At one point, I don't want to lose this, this is a little bit off the subject. We actually kind of, I guess, melded together eight and nine, but I think there is some budget surplus left from the end of the fiscal year that we could allocate toward the, the town hall fund, maybe somewhere around 175 or $1,000, something like that. So I think, you know, we should all think about adding that to the new town hall fund. There was some talk here about, you know, how much is this going to cost? The last cost estimates we saw were 7.5 million without the EMT. We don't have anywhere near 7.5 million dollars, and what we talked about at the last meeting, we all unanimously seem to agree to, was, was that we wanted to take 3,000 square feet off of the plan and reduce the cost by about a million, a million dollars. And I don't see any evidence of having done that. The town, when we first got into this, the town defined what it needed. You know, they identified their needs, and they said that we need to focus on need versus want. So need at that time was defined as somewhere around 12,000 or 13,000 square feet. The first plans that we see come in at 18,000 square feet, 50% higher than what was defined as what the town needs. I think there's been far too much focus on want and not enough focus on need, and we need to refocus this and bring this, this town hall down to a, a size that's much more reasonable and something that we really have a, a hope of being able to afford.
The challenge I have is that we've, we've, I know that there have been meetings between the architects and, and our town manager. There's been limitations in terms of, as much as they've, they've tried to carve out a million dollars or 3,000 square feet, they were only successful at carving out 1,100 square feet. As I look through the plans, I'm not seeing, and you, I'm sure you've looked through them too, I'm not seeing excess, not seeing necessarily that you can cut this room or cut that room And, and also, if you think about it, Gary, if I'm remembering correctly, when we first started this process years, a year ago, when we interviewed the architects, the per-square footage was only about 250 a foot, and now it's up to 380. So the, the prices will continue to expand. This is a point that I had in the back of my head and just flew out. So we'll, we'll get to that, but I think we don't necessarily, on this number, which is number eight, I don't think that there's a vote, but I think the ask prior to next meeting is to build a five-year plan on funding for each of, for our capital, you know, what we're expecting from the capitals, capital acquisitions, streets and infrastructure, public safety, so we can map that out, where those funds, and we'll do some estimating in terms of, you know, what do we expect the hotel tax to be? What do we expect, things that we can count on to, to fund those things? And also, I will, with the town manager, meet with our bankers also to determine, you know, what would debt service be like? I'm not, you know, I don't think any of us were able, well, I know I wasn't able to buy my beach house and live in Dewey Beach without having some form of debt. You know, Kate did a, I asked Kate for an analysis earlier in the week, and she provided me something that was very surprising, and that is over the last 10 years, the average home value here in Dewey Beach has, has increased 70%. And so we were not, and that's only 10 years ago. So if you go back to the 2030, how much we have grown from the old town hall that we built to where we are now, I think it's a town hall that needs to be representative of, of who we are and who we are going to be in 20 years. So I think we should have a motion to possibly table the capital expenditure conversation to, until next, until next meeting, so that we can put a defined five-year plan. I think that's something that we've been talked about, but we're actually haven't done it. And I think that's, so that's all right. Can I have a, you need a motion to table or just table?
You need a motion to table.
Can I have a motion just to table number eight, so we can focus on number nine, specifically?
I move that we table number eight and revisit that at the next meeting, because information contained in number nine will be relevant, as is other information. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have added that in there, but I, I motion that we table number eight and move it to next time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll, Sheena's fortunate, she's going to get out of town for, for some vacation, and then we'll get together and work on, on that. But I think it's a, it's an important next step as we look at what our expenditures are. Number nine, discuss an update, discuss updates and potential next steps regarding the new town hall and police station. So I'm going to, I'm going to provide an overview. The drawings are out there, the old and the new. The architects were able to carve out about 1,100 square feet. I, I thought challenge, but I asked the council to, to review those as to where another 2,000 square feet could come from. Gary makes a very valid point in terms of, you know, the 12,000 to the 18,000 square feet. But I, I'm at a, I'm challenged, because I, I do want us to have a nice open lobby where our town residents can go and have, get their, get what they need done, and having two separate lobbies, so that what's happening in the police station is not necessarily happening in front of town hall administrative, and that there's a, a door that's shut there. But I asked the council to go to review those plans, just to, to provide some suggestions. I will tell you that two things came out, and from a full disclosure, if we do eliminate 1,100, yes, that is 300,000 square feet. Commissioner Persinger did bring up the fact that it's 8.6 million, assuming that, that includes the million dollars for the Sussex County EMT unit. So we'll put that off on the side, because it's not necessarily, that only will happen if Sussex County decides that they want to keep the EMT. So at the 7 million, I believe there was, there was an additional million, 2,000,100 of contingency funds, which I think is important to have, just in case every budget I've, every building I've ever built is always taking a little bit longer, costs a little bit more. So there's that million dollars that's incorporated in then. As, as Paul alluded to, we are, we are listed for some additional grants, but they are, as Commissioner Givens commented, they're right now rainbows and unicorns. We don't know what that's, what that's going to hold. But the two things we know right now is that we can, this drawing that you have is eliminated 1,100 square feet, which will save us $300,000. The other thing I was communicating, that was the one that flew out of my head, is that what you're seeing from these drawings does put us, and correct me if I'm wrong, town manager, this does put us under a height limitation here in town hall, so we don't have to do anything with that, with or without the parking. If we eliminate the parking and just put it on, put on the base, that reduces another 300,000, because when you think there's just cinder blocks, that's, there's a potential of a $600,000 savings. I was hoping to have this on, on for next steps, and I don't know that we can, if we're, you know, we all have to be in agreement, but I, something so important to this town, I really want us to be in agreement in terms of the next steps, is to have the architecture firm come back with 3D imagery, so we can see what it would look like to walk into town hall, to be able to walk around, see the various faces. That will come, once we are, without wasting money, we have agreed upon the overall size, whether it's going to be parking or not, and parking or not is going to dictate really whether it's nine-foot ceilings or 10-foot ceilings. So I'll open it up for questions or comments to council.
I want to go first.
Why?
Because I've talked too much.
Commissioner Bauer?
Well, as far as the main lobby, I think we ended the last meeting where we, we talked about, I think the view is that we want to have, you know, a welcoming when you walk in. I mean, we're a small town, you know, I think it's the warmth that you get when you walk in there. How many people look forward to coming into town hall and saying hi to Joyce for years, right? Instead of walking in and press, you know, looking in the directory and figuring out what button to push and what floor to go to. So I think we need to have some welcome area in the front. Doesn't have to be big, I mean, you know, maybe it's 10, 15 square, I don't know. I mean, that doesn't have to be huge, but just something that welcomes you there, a window, and then you could even put some office space behind it. It doesn't have to be, you know, that, that big of a spot, but I, that's what I'd like in, in being centered, and then left and right police and, and administration, and I think we could put some stuff there. I understand the parking side of it, I mean, is, when you have people that come to work, they got to park somewhere, right? They're going to either use town spaces or, you know, private property spaces. So I'd like to have that included, but we might not be able to afford it. And if that's the case, that's what we'll live with. So that's my two cents worth on it. I mean, it all looks nice. You know, we're going to spend a lot of money with the architect, having them redo plans over and over again, so we're going to have to finalize something, saying, okay, hey, you got X number of dollars, this is how many square feet we need, you figure out how to make it look, and this is, this is our only ask that, you know, that you, we make it welcoming as you come in the door.
Commissioner Jazinski?
Yeah, so before I kind of go in, I want to ask our town manager, since you're kind of the primary interface. of the primary interface with the GMB, when, when we kind of left with the request to knock a million dollars off, which would be about 3,000 square feet, and make, you know, the building kind of have a nice welcoming area that was kind of common to both administrative and public safety. When I got these updated plans, it struck me that you were dealing with some constraints, that you felt that you couldn't quite get us where we asked you to be. And I just want to understand what kind of constraints that you're dealing with, so we understand what you're trying to work with and why, kind of, you, you got us kind of, I think, part of the way there, but not really there.
Yeah, thanks. So what I'm looking at, when I, when I sit down with GMB, is what space do my employees, our team, need in the future to work? And work in an environment that they feel when they come to work, it's a good environment, they have proper space, we have the building split in such a way that the police officers are able to function in a safe manner when they're interviewing a subject, or they have to use their holding cells. My parking people are in a location and they have enough workspaces. And then our admin folks, which, you know, people come in and get the parking permits, they get business license, they get a number of different things, and that takes a lot of area and space for our people to be able to work. Just the, you know, August, we're, we are...
Mrs. Olber, you're kind of cutting out of it. Could you kind of back up and try to speak closer to the microphone?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So what I'm looking at is trying to get a town hall that is good for the employees, good for our team, a town hall that they feel comfortable in working in their space, and we're giving them enough space to do those, to do that job. Our police department needs to be able to handle things safely when they're in there. They need to be able to communicate with each other. They need to be able to interview somebody in, in an interview room. They need to be able to put people into, if they have to, into a cell that's not only safe for our officers, but it's also safe for the person that's being put in. Dewey Beach has been operating for far too long, unacceptable space in a town hall. Over a year and a half ago, we provided pictures to the commissioners, and most of the commissioners that have been in our town hall, we are doing the best we can, but we're on top of each other. So I met with each one of the department heads, they've looked at the plans, they're not happy with this plan that we have in front of us, they're really not. They're, they're saying that we're on different floors and it's too small, but it's better than what we're currently in. They liked the original plan that gave them more space. I think the plan that we have in front of us gets the job done, and it hopefully gets the job done for at least the next 20 years. When I sit down with GMB and I tell them, this is what we have to do to get my employees in workable space, the GMB comes up with a plan like this, then Dean Townsend and I go back and forth and we cut a little bit off and we make the offices a little bit smaller or we take away some additional space. I know 7.6 million dollars is a lot of money. One of our other beach communities is spending 4.2 million on a lifeguard station in bathrooms. So if you, and that's a 5,000 square foot building that they're, they're building, and it's going to look very nice, but we're, we're putting in our police department, our admin folks, our parking people, our building official, our alderman, our workspace that we're in right now, all in this one, one building on a very small lot and trying to do the best we can with that. And at the same time, make it presentable, as Commissioner Bauer has said, make it feel somewhat warm when, when you come in. But we do need to have some separation between the police department and the administrative side. And I know there's been a lot of talk about making sure we're, we're working as a team. And we are working as a team, but when it comes to law enforcement and the administrative folks, we, there does need to be some separation, and I think the chief would agree with me on that. If you have some questions about that, I could go a little bit more in depth, but when our police officers are working on investigations, they need to have an area that is secure and that nobody else is going to hear what they're saying, and nobody else is going to see what they are currently writing in those reports. They are walking around with weapons. That's another huge concern when you have people moving in and through, through a building, and they will have prisoners, and that's another concern, ensuring that those prisoners do not get any access to the administrative side of the building. I think we're very fortunate here in Dewey Beach to have this, this location. It's not as big as I would like it to be, but it's, we do, we do have this location. I think the paramedics, after you heard their presentation at the last month's meeting, I think you know that they do want to be involved and be part of this, this program. They have not committed yet in writing, but verbally, they do like what they are seeing on this, on this location and their facility there on the second floor in their one squad bay.
Okay.
I'm not sure how much more I can cut out of this with, with being able to service the town for the next 20 years. I, I'm really not. I'm not sure what else we can cut. I think we are, with this set, second set of plans, working with GMB, I don't think we can cut anymore and still have a good facility for our employees to work in. It's, it's tough because the lot is on Route One and then the other entrance is out on Rodney Street, so we, we work within those parameters to try to make the, the property as much as an advantage to us as possible. We've lowered the profile of the building down to 38 feet. I see Dean Townsend is on, in case you have any questions about that. I know Commissioner Jazinski had some questions about the flood elevation. I'm sure either Dean or Dawn could ask those also. When it comes to parking, I think if you talk to the chief, she's going to agree that we do need parking underneath the building. It, it can be taken away and it will, will save approximately $300,000, maybe a little bit more than that if we lower it and take away the parking underneath. But parking is a premium in Dewey. With what's going on down at, at the end of Rodney Street with blue water, with them adding the additional boats that they will have in those boat racks, approximately 100 boats in the boat racks that they're going to be putting in dry storage, there's going to be a lot of parking challenges on Rodney, on Rodney Street. So I would just ask the commissioners kind of, kind of think about what I, what I've said. I know it's a lot of money. Again, I would compare it to the lifeguard station they're building in Rehoboth, at 4.2 million dollars. In our, in our town hall, that's going to incorporate everything we have in town into one building at approximately $8 million. I don't know if the chief has any additional comments or not. Chief.
I do feel that we do need that, we do need that parking. I can tell you, I came from training the other day and I couldn't even park in front of the police department. All the spots were taken on the side and our parking lot, there was nowhere for me to even park to go into my own building. So, and for example, we have the seasonal starting, I have 13 seasonals for Memorial Day weekend, we have six officers coming from outside, we have all of our officers, 13 seasonals, and then we're going to have the fire marshals and other people coming in. Where are they all, 30-some people or more, where are they all going to park? And if we do away with that parking, it's going to cause some problems in the future because it's so tight as far as parking. I will be honest, and I did like the layout of the first building. I know it's a little more than the budget that everybody wants to spend, but the layout, especially the cells and everything where they were placed, the police department was all on the same floor. I don't like the fact in the new layout that myself, the lieutenant, and the administrative assistant are once again, like we have now, on a different floor from the officers. It really does hinder our communications. We're always running back up and down the stairs to talk to each other and do things. And the dispatch center will be on a different floor than myself and the lieutenant. It just makes it more challenging. The cells are kind of like on the new design in the middle between where there's some admin people behind it and then police on this side. The evidence is separated from the detective, where we had planned to combine that and that person would be in charge of the evidence with the walkthrough. So, you know, everything has been changed a lot. It doesn't seem to be as functional as the first design. So obviously, we're going to work with whatever we get, because we have what we have now, but I do prefer the first design. I think it was more functional layout of the building.
Commissioner Jazinski, I know you brought up at the end of the last meeting, we still have to pay for what goes inside the building, and I, and I understand that also, and that also will be something that we're going to have to look at for the funding.
Right. So I do have a question for, for Dean, our, our architect. So part of this request from us was to have, you know, a very welcoming building for the public, one which people walked in, they have some kind of reasonable-sized lobby, and they can at least have, have, you know, a public safety and a administrative window kind of there that they can get a lot of the common functions done, not everything, but at least a lot of the common things that come into a building for. And what I, what I see, what I saw on the original plan and what I see on this plan is kind of a chopped-up set of lobbies. And when we originally approved going forward with GMB, what we had is we had a nice outside staircase to a main entrance and a nice-sized lobby that opened up to both of those functions. And I'm just trying to understand why we can't have something like that, because we all liked it. We all liked the idea that when you walked into the building, there was a nice-sized lobby at the main level, you didn't have to go through a closed staircase or into an elevator, and you could see the function. Why, why is that not part of the plan?
So a lot of that evolved with subsequent feedback for having one consolidated lobby within, it's splitting off so that there was a function of town on one side and police on the opposite. We could very much move it back to that way, there's nothing against it, but that was the last and most recent set of directions that was provided to me to help push it that way. And similarly, if you do want to have it so there's that exterior ramp and stairs going into it, that's achievable too, but it's also going to require taking away more space from the exterior, which, you know, looking at the actual lobbies themselves, seeing as there's two, well, three lobbies with the last set of schemes that came forward, really a lot of that is going to be the additional space that you would have to take away to go back to that ramp and stair, just to get up into the building versus what's being shown currently. So there is a possibility to do that. This is just currently response to the whole conversation of having it. So there were the three separate lobbies, one for the main gathering, one for the town of the building, and then the one separate for the police and parking enforcement.
So, so, Mr. Olber, here, here's kind of where I am. I mean, you kind of gave us, and you were kind of prepared to do that, your, your position that this, the space that you put in the reduced plan, you know, which is only 1,000 square feet smaller, is really very suboptimal, and you need the space in the original plan, and the chief's backing you up on that. Going to Mr. Persinger's point earlier, if we're, if we're going to go to this kind of money that would be required to build it, we need to have a better understanding of our capital plan throughout this whole thing. Going back to Dean, and I'm sorry, Dean, I call you by first name because I don't remember your last name.
No, you're fine.
His, his point, this is just me and I want the other commissioners' feedback. I, I didn't care if you had to climb up a set of stairs on the exterior. I really liked the public being able to walk in the door and see a window and access key town functions from a reasonably proportioned lobby. I'm very not concerned with additional lobbies throughout the building. I'm more concerned that when people walk in, they see a face, it's not just a desk, it's not just a desk in a room, but it's actually kind of the, the administrative work area and maybe a window for the, some of the police functions, like whether it's tickets or whatnot, for people to be able to do some key pieces of business. And I like that, I like that a lot. So I want to hear what the other commissioners think of that. I'm kind of leaning to, I want, I know we want to kind of get moving on this, but I think we need to spend some time talking about the five-year budget sooner rather than later with this in the capital plan, and really understanding where the money's going to come from, to do what in essence is going to be the larger project, not the smaller project, because it sounds like that's what you guys need. And candidly, going through these designs and in an interactive manner, working with our architect on something that we think can work for both the town's function as well as the public's function. I know you're trying to make sure the employees are happy, but I want the public to be happy with the building they walk into as well.
So let me, give me, you want your two cents before my two cents, or?
Do I get to speak, sir?
So...
All the commissioners have.
Let, let me, yeah, let me just give my two cents. I have, I, I believe that we need to, I, but I agree with Commissioner Jazinski. You should be able to go up a ramp or go up a few steps and be able to get your business done at town hall. I just think it's, it's more, it's going to be more welcoming than a desk in front, which is the current, current drawings have a desk and then you go upstairs or an elevator to a big, much bigger lobby, as the town manager has communicated to me. The lobbies are busy. There are people going every day for whether it's businesses, business even outside of the summer, for, for building permits, for work permits, et cetera. There's, it's a busy environment. And I do want us, when we're done with council and we've moved on, to be able to look back and be proud of what we were able to accomplish. And we have done a lot from this council's perspective, but this is going to be a physical building that the town is either going to say, what did those, those, you know, why they do this, or isn't it great that they did this? And I think that on the flip, on the backside of it is, I want them to be happy, I want everyone in town to be happy with, as this is our town hall, something to be proud of. Not a police department that somebody, I believe, broke out of years ago because they realized it was just drywall between them and the, on the outside. I do, I understand Commissioner Jazinski's point and Gary's point and Commissioner Persinger's point about need versus want. I don't see that here. And that's me, and so in my mind, even as from a finance perspective, what we build, we will use. And we have the building to town manager's point, $5 million for lifeguard station, $7 million for town hall. It seems like we're getting the better. And when it comes to the funding and the financing, it's still going to cost us 7 million. We can cut this or cut that or change, it's going to cost us $7 million. And that's what we're going to have to spend. It's, but we're just going to have to put it on paper as to where the sources and uses of funds. And I think we need to, if we, we can get ourselves, if we can move forward with understanding that we're going to figure out how to pay for it. This town is going to figure out how to pay for it. Whether it, no one likes the word debt, but it's part, it may be what we need. If you look at the other municipalities, there's a full balance sheet on both sides. When we built the Bayard pumping station, we had to take on a million dollars in debt to have it done. I want us, I do like the, the first layout, I like some of the components of the second layout. I understand chief's point of view, if it's not, it's not great in terms of the ups and downs and from a teamwork perspective, but I would just like us to find a path forward and kind of move to say, all right, well, it's going to cost this, and this is going to be the square footage, and this is what the lobby's going to look like, and we're going to have parking underneath. Because, all right, Gary. Go ahead, Commissioner Gibb.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I have some comments, but first I wanted to ask Mr. Townsend, we had heard when the first proposals came out that there was a requirement that cells be on an exterior wall, these are interior. Can you verify that that is to code?
Yeah, it should still be to code. It is one of those things, especially it's a lot more easier to go ahead and put them to the exterior, and at the time, there was doubts of whether or not it would be permissible by the fire marshal with or without sprinklers, but at this point, we have really fully assessed that the facility needs to be sprinkled anyways, which makes it more permissible than the previous circumstance. So at that point in time with the preliminary, it's usually easier, say, just go ahead, stick it to the exterior, just so everyone involved is covered, which is more or less the origin of that.
Okay, thank you. So as I think about this building that we're building, I keep coming back to the town home, not town hall. Y'all know that I'm a psychologist and I'm thinking about this being a holding environment for both our employees and for the visitors and residences. I know when my husband and I bought our first home together, it was, it felt so huge that I didn't know how we would fill it. And then, once I had two children, it was too small and I couldn't figure out how we're going to survive. I think that what we have here is not the too big, we're not going to have the empty rooms that are waiting for furniture. I think we need every inch of this. I've been speaking with a lot of chiefs of police, both in Pennsylvania and Delaware over the past couple of weeks, and I've learned a lot about how those areas can't be combined. I know that Commissioner Jazinski had suggested that we perhaps have common lounge areas or work areas or something like that. I now understand that that can't happen, and when I think back to my time in the hospitals, I had to have separate areas for the doctors to be where they weren't common with the group. So I, I now understand that and agree that we need to have that space. When somebody comes to visit, you should have parking for them. Dewey Beach parking is an absolute premium. I can't imagine planning for this gorgeous new place and not having a place for people to put their cars when they come to see us. I much prefer the center entry to the, either into the building entry. I like the idea of there being a welcoming lobby, but beyond that, I think we need to trust the people that are going to be living there to make it the space that will work for them. Much like we trust them to run their budgets, we should trust them to determine their space within the limits of the money we give them. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, I don't think...
Yeah, I don't think there's any question, certainly hasn't been any question in my mind that the town has to have more space. I mean, you, you made the case for that. The shortcomings, the deficiencies in the police department space right now are clear. They're well documented. They have to be, have to be corrected. We have to have a new facility that handles that. Again, we're talking about need and want. You find what you need to run this town efficiently, efficiently, to have new space for both the administrative side and the police. As more than twice what you currently have now. And we had no discussions whatsoever about the size of this building between sometime, I think probably in the spring of, of last year until our, our last meeting. We had no discussions about the size. So it's, it's hard for me to accept the fact that what is needed here is in fact not a little over twice the space that you have, but more than three times the space that you currently have. I, I can't see that. And to, to tell me that you can't cut 3,000 square feet out of this facility, out of that first draft plan. There's cognitive dissonance for me as well. We've got a professional architect, you know, who can work on this. You make some offices smaller, you, you take some offices away, you eliminate some conference rooms. There has to be a way of getting there. And I, I just don't accept that this is the, the absolute minimum space that, that is needed. I just have not received any justification for that. To compare what we're doing here to, to what Rehoboth might be doing. We're not Rehoboth. We never, we never will be. We don't have the same financial base that Rehoboth has. I, I just don't think there's a valid comparison there. I don't, I don't like the, the idea of coming into the Town Hall and having a choice between a stairwell and an elevator. There has to be a lobby. I agree with Commissioner Jazinski. It's, you know, it's nice to be able to move one way and, and deal with the police side and, and to move another way in the lobby. Deal with the administrative side. I don't know how you have parking, how you accommodate parking underneath and have that lobby on the first floor. From, from my, my opinion is we can do without the, the underground parking. It's, it's a cost savings. If you want to commandeer some, some spaces on Rodney Avenue, I don't have a problem with that as well. You can park police vehicles and, and talent administrative employee vehicles there as well. That said, I don't think the town council has veto authority over the design of the, of the, the building. I mean, that's my thought. Others may disagree. What I think we have, have to do and do have the authority, the responsibility to approve is the cost. I don't accept that it has to cost $7 million. I haven't been convinced that, that that has to be the figure. But, you know, whatever the design is, it has to have a financing plan that is really sound and solid. We can't depend on the prospect of getting grant money or getting donations from some town businesses. You know, unless you've got some firm commitments and some town owner, some business owner here in town says, I'm going to contribute X dollars to, to the cost of this Town Hall. I don't want to be in a position of having to vote for something of a certain size and a certain cost unless I know that we can pay that cost. And I really want to see a, a sound plan to do that. One final issue, and that is the height of the building. When we talked about this the last time, and this is, I guess, for the architect as well. It's my understanding that this is AE, this, this, the flood zone there is AE5, which means that you know, you have to go six feet. A maximum of 38 feet potentially. But as I understand it, that, that ground is already at about four feet above sea level. So it seems to me that including freeboard, you can only go up two more feet and then 32 feet from there. So you really have a maximum height from ground level of 34 feet. Is that not correct?
Correct.
Correct. So we're not talking 38 feet, we're talking 34 feet. Can we do that if, if you include the, the parking?
Yes, it's very much achievable. Unfortunately, we were not able to procure that revised elevation for you guys today. Just because we were working through the other stuff and then we got the okay about Wednesday or so. So we were a little busy to get back to you, but otherwise, in terms of the height of the building and the programming, that's achievable to be under it. It's just, once again, we're still going through and actually condensing it for you guys.
I think to have a lobby that, it sounds like the commissioners want, you're, you're not going to be able to have parking underneath if you want a welcoming, warm feeling lobby when you come in. Rehoboth has a huge lobby with steps that are two and a, almost two and a half stories up or a story and a half up before you get to the second floor. It, it looks really nice. It does give you a warm feeling when you come in. They have night, nice art and pictures on the wall. But to me, it's wasted space. That's my opinion. I mean, I could use that space for my folks to work in. Instead of having this two-story foyer with these, these nice steps. But if the guidance from the commissioners is to have a lobby you walk in from the ground floor and to have an admin side on one side and a police side on the other side. I'm sure I could get together with Dean and we could design that, but it will, we, we might as well just not have the parking and, and go forward with that. Because if not, you walk in, if we want to have it elevated, you walk in and the only way you're going to be able to get up to the second floor, possibly the third floor, is by elevator or steps. So I just, I need to know if we're going to have a, a lobby like that and we can go back and redesign that. But we are going to lose all the parking. And that's, I'm fine with that. That's what you want to do.
Excuse me, I, I, I'm kind of confused, Mr. Solper, because the original proposal had an outside set of steps, walking into a lobby on the second floor. It was not a two-story lobby. It was a one-story lobby. With those functions there, and it still had parking underneath it, and it met the height limit. So, I mean, Dean, you, you tell me. I mean, it sounds like we can meet the height limit. Have a common lobby between it and have exterior steps going into that main floor with parking underneath the building. It just happens to be that's not the design in front of us. Is that correct or am I wrong about that?
Correct. And the other added layer to that whole proposal, especially for all the teams that were involved for that preliminary. We were all basing off just what site information we could have at the time. Since then, we did receive a surveyed site. Which did include setbacks, which have now hemmed us in more so than the original proposals. Which is more or less what you're seeing is a reflection of the entire building design being compressed within the site constraints, within the setbacks. Which both of the other teams did not have and we were still shy of it. So that's part of the whole issue about in terms of, we can definitely do the exterior ramp and stairs. But it is going to take away from the actual building space just because we can't encroach past that. That's one of the hard things we're running into right now. But otherwise, it is still feasibility, especially if you guys are talking about reducing the parking beneath. Because that actually does help free up some of those other constraints. Then we can then tighten it back up. But yeah, it's just one of those give and takes, especially even from the initial proposal that we had, I believe, back in July, August. Around that.
My, my concern is if we, if we leave today's session and we put this into a box and you kind of go and you just kind of come up with an answer and come back in another month. We may be kind of still not really close to, to getting to the answer than we were today or we were at the last meeting. So I'm kind of thinking we all need to be in the same room and really kind of workshop this. And be able to talk about the design constraints and doing it. And, but before we have that conversation with you, we absolutely, from Commissioner Pershing's point of view. Have to go through the capital budget and understand how we're paying for it so that we know that we can afford what our town manager and our, and our chief of police are telling us they need space wise. And I think that we need to basically really workshop the finances around the aspect of what they're saying. And then we need to workshop the plans so that we can all be happy and move forward with this sort of thing.
Okay. So Dean, go ahead, Paul.
No, I said, I agree.
You agree that we should have a workshop?
Yep, let's do it. Let's, you know, let's come up with, let's finalize what our money situation is. And then we're going to say, hey, this is what we're, this is what we're going to do going forward. No use keeping redrawing this thing because I'm sure we, we're spending money. With GMB, no offense, but we're spending money with you to keep redesigning this thing as money we should be spending on the construction of the thing. So until we can concrete say, hey, this is what, this is the bottom line. This is our last dollar.
Right.
This is what we're willing to take on in debt, or if we are going to take on anything in debt and take it from there.
Is this a public workshop or executive session workshop?
This needs to be public.
Public workshop.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is.
So this is the workshop. Are you suggesting that we have a dedicated meeting just on Town Hall? Off schedule from our normal commissioner meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was suggesting. And the, the first half of the meeting is the finance aspect.
All right. When could that meeting occur? When is, when will people be in town?
What notice has to be provided?
Seven. And, and just as directive then, so we're going to have a workshop. We're going to have the council open up, Town Hall wants and needs to. We'll work on the financing piece beforehand so that we can say, you know, what numbers that mean and, and go to. And hopefully Dean will be there so that we can give some clear directions that when we leave that meeting. He knows exactly where the lobby is or how to lobby, if there's parking, not parking.
Can we do that June 2nd?
I'm good with that.
Paul, Commissioner Bauer.
Yes, I'm good with that too. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I, I, I just don't know. That's the Friday after Memorial Day, is that?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, I, I can't.
Would the ninth be better? Can you get in before our next meeting?
Things are kind of up in the air for me right now. So I, I think, you know, if the second works for people, then I'll just see if I can fit that in my schedule.
I, I think that we have two options. So let's, let's schedule the second. As this is the only thing that we're going to focus on. And do the same thing, two o'clock, two or three o'clock here. Is that, is that okay? If that, if that, for some reason that doesn't work. Then provided that there's nothing from an agenda perspective, that's going to require us to maybe very minimal agenda, except this is what we're talking about. Maybe review the financials, review the, but.
So we're saying June 2nd?
June 2nd for right now, but
Three o'clock.
But if all of us can't get together, then we're going to change, yes, three o'clock, June 2nd. Here. And and if that does not work, then we will modify the agenda. So that's the only thing that we talk about on the 16th. Mayor, I have one thing. So Dean, I'm looking at the proposal from May 20th of 2022. It's titled new Town Hall and Police Department, GMB. It's got the outside of the building. But it really doesn't have a breakdown of the interior of the building at all. So I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page with with the other commissioners about the design that they said GMB provided that showed a a lobby and the breakdown of the inside of the building because this is the only proposal that I have. And this was the one that I think was given at our meeting. It shows the, the outside of the building, but I don't think it was ever broken down to the interior until we went through that first draft. So I just, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page when we're talking about GMB's first proposal to the town. I think the point there, Bill, was that the, there's clearly steps and a ramp up into what was On the outside, you can see that, but you don't see anything on the interior of the building, what the lobby looks like, what the space, the workspace looks like. None of that is actually from an architect, from GMB, from the one that I have, Dean, from May 20, 20th of 2022. It's not in this one. Maybe I missed one somewhere, but I did not see it.
No, Bill, all they were, were just conceptual massings at that point.
All right. So we, we've got our next steps in terms of the, number nine is in terms of, number eight and nine in terms of what we need from a capital expenditure perspective as well as Town Hall. I don't think we need to do anything in terms of motions for that. Number, moving on to number 10, review April financials. I did, you know, surprised when I saw a 40 or $50,000 loss, but then I looked back to last year, April's normally our month where we I think we lost $100,000 last April. And it's just because as we start to ramp up before really the revenue kicks in from parking. Working will, I didn't have any, I didn't have any questions. If you have any questions, council, please, let me know if you have anything that Sheena can.
I mean, I, I posed some questions to, to Sheena about the reports that I think still need to be answered about the unassigned fund and, you know, how things get updated. I think the, the unassigned fund went up for some reason, even though we had a loss. I'm not sure how that happens. But I, you know, whenever, my, my assumption is because the unassigned fund is basically where we pay the bills from. You know, if we've got a loss, then that's a charge, going to be a charge against the, the unassigned fund. And according to our, that's our, not our investment policy, but our fund balance policy. We need to have a, the town needs to, to make some changes, needs to do something to restore that fund to the, the correct balance. Doesn't have to involve the commissioners unless it becomes a really serious deficit, but you know, I would just like to see in succeeding reports that we recognize the, those minimum balances, but for the rainy day fund as well. The unassigned fund and that we, we maintain that. And the other question I had was, was about the, the investment income. And I'm not sure. You know, I, I, I think over the last year, we probably haven't had any investment income because the market's been so bad, but, but now things are coming back a little bit. It's not clear to me, it's not, it shows up in the, the, the basic profit and loss statement, I guess. But it's not real money in the sense that we don't use it to, we don't spend it to pay the bills because it stays with Brown Advisory. And I'm just wondering, you know, I, I think that that should be added to the rainy day fund since it's with, with Brown Advisory and I'm not you know, I, I'm giving you my opinion. I'm not sure what the right answer is, but I just think that's another issue that needs to be taken a look at. Because hopefully we will see some more investment income. But that's all I have.
As Gary brings it up, Sheena, did I, was there, I don't see in April where the interest expense that we would have received, is that, am I missing out? Because we also have the
Interest income, that's in there, yeah. It's, it's in miscellaneous income, which, and I focused on it because you haven't broken that out in the most, in the previous P and L reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Okay.
But that is, that is real spendable money because, you know, it goes into your bank account.
You're right. Okay. Any other comments? Number 11, final comments, town manager.
Our maintenance team, we finally have three, one part-time and two full-time employed that started Monday. So as you see, there, there are a lot of areas around town that were not maintained as far as weed whacking and, and grass cutting. That is being taken care of. The beach mats are being put out from Swede Street north to Chesapeake because there is no beach replenishment at that end of the beach. And the reason is the Corps of Engineers, when they had their survey done, said there was plenty of sand at the north end of the beach. I would like to say that the, the chief and I have discussed with the marijuana bill being passed. Want to make sure everybody understands that there will be no marijuana smoked in public. The law states that clearly. There will be no marijuana possessed by anybody under the age of 21 unless they have a prescription. And the chief will be enforcing that throughout the town. I want to make that perfectly clear. Dawn and Jim have done an outstanding job, given the major projects that we have around town with the Starboard Claw, Blue Water, Grotto's, Starboard Sauce. They take a lot of time for our folks to review and Jim and Dawn have done a great job. The front office has been very busy. Laura and Jeanne have done a good job. Sheena, with the number of lifeguards coming in, the 60 there with our parking people and with our summer police officers, everybody is really doing a great job considering the amount of work they, they have, have coming in. We are looking at grants. I want the commissioners to know the chief is working very hard to get grants to pay for some of the, the projects and some of the equipment that she is using. She may talk about that a little bit tonight. But I'd like to thank all the work by our employees. They're just doing an outstanding job.
Thank you, sir. Chief.
We have 13 seasonals in our academy right now. They will be done on, next Thursday. So they will be deployed on Memorial Day weekend with the rest of us. There's going to be a lot of people out here for that weekend. Like I said, other
Like I said, other agencies are coming to help. All our seasonals and all our officers will be working, so we'll have plenty of people out there. I believe the bike training will be, I think it's the first weekend in June. We're trying to coordinate that with Bethany. So we won't have the bikes out there until that, that's a three-day class. So we're gonna try to get at least eight of them certified on the bike. So you'll have to see the bikes out there. TFC Planner is still in field training. Hopefully, he'll be a solo status in the next three to four weeks. And I still have one opening that I'm working to fill. And I did testing for some academy positions for the fall. I had six respond and six pass the test, so I'm working on that process right now. And we're just gearing up and getting ready for our first big holiday weekend. That's about it.
Commissioner Bauer.
Early departure, Paul?
All right, I'm back. I'm sorry, accidentally hit the mute button. I want to thank Chief for doing such a great job getting people hired and trained, and our town manager for all the great work he's doing. The House Bill 168, I mean, we talked, it was mentioned briefly because it was in committee, but I just want to inform the public of this. House Bill 68 went through, it was introduced and assigned to the Revenue and Finance Committee in the House yesterday. What that is, is a, it's a short-term rental tax where the state, and Bill, you had mentioned this earlier, where the state is going to, you know, the idea is that whether you rent a hotel room or you rent a house, it doesn't matter, you're gonna pay the same tax at a hotel that you do at the hotel, which is eight plus, in our case, three. Our disadvantage is, is currently we are at three. Rehoboth, we charge a 3% rental accommodations tax, right? So we're at three, Bethany's at seven, Rehoboth is at six, Fenwick is at five or six. I could be off one on that. And so, you know, we're way behind. I mean, we're half, at least half of what everybody else is. So if the state passes it before we do anything, then the state will keep the money. If the bill, if the bill's gonna pass, which it actually sounds pretty promising from what I'm hearing up in Dover, then at that case, you know, we're gonna be left behind, and that's roughly about $400,000 a year of revenue that would buy a heck of a lot of town hall. So inaction is going to, you know, cause problems for us. House Bill 168 is sponsored by Kim Williams as the primary sponsor. Mansivino and Townsend are the additional sponsors on it. Walsh, Bolden, Johnson and Matthews are also cosponsors on it. So if you get it, I emailed it to all our commissioners, our town manager. Please look it up. I'm gonna pay attention to it. I'm gonna speak with our Speaker of the House, our representative about that and see what can and can't be done. But I think it's something that we're going to need to act on. I know the public's not gonna like getting taxed. No one does, right? So if all of a sudden you're renting a house today at three, and tomorrow morning you wake up, it's 11%, somebody's gonna say, you never told me. Although it's the state doing it, not us. So I think, given a choice, people are gonna want to keep that money within Dewey Beach and not give it to the state. So we're gonna have to act on this pretty quick if we're gonna do something or just say, we don't need the $400,000 a year.
Commissioner Bauer, do we have time to act on it in our next meeting? Are we time pressed?
Session's over June 30th, so if it passes in this session, then we have to approve ours before June 30th.
Okay.
So to Commissioner Bauer's point, does it have to actually be the charter change, or does it just need to be that we approved it on our end to be subject to changing the charter?
I defer to our town council for that answer. We'd have to get the charter approved while they're trying to approve a bill.
We can't, we can't have in the conversation. These are individual comments at the end of the meeting. I, to your point, we will evaluate what we need to do for next steps and make it a priority.
The bill's in everybody's inbox in your town email.
Thank you, Paul. Commissioner Givings.
In reference to town manager's comments about the changes in marijuana legislation for the state of Delaware, signs in town should say no smoking, no vaping. Any place that we have the possibility, we have signs up, make that the rule. Because as I understand, people don't think vaping is smoking. And as we have contact with business owners in town, might want to suggest that as well.
Very good. Commissioner Jazinski.
I've talked enough.
Commissioner Bursinger.
Yeah, I'm tired of the sound of my own voice.
We're not. Just final comments, you know, yes, we have Memorial Day coming up this weekend. Good luck, or next weekend, so good luck, Chief. See you out there. Looking forward to it. As we noted, we will have a special meeting on June 2nd, followed by potentially another commission meeting on 16th. There will also, we'll also add a meeting on June 1st, the Association of Coastal Towns. That being said, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Hey, thanks, everyone.
Bye, guys.
See ya.